Good morning, I'd like to call this the meeting to order of the Advisory Planning Commission on Friday, August 27, 2021 at 10:00 a.m. I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the traditional territory of this day list, and I'd like to thank my fellow APC members for being here today and welcome any members of the public. Before we move on to the first item on the agenda, I'd like to take this opportunity to revisit the role of the APC, which is to offer recommendation to council on matters relating to land use here in the village of Harrison. Our advice takes a form of recommendations, and today we are here to consider a rezoning application, which will be described by our planner, Ken Cossey. APC members will have the opportunity to ask questions about the proposed rezoning, and ultimately, we can make recommendations about that application, which will be forwarded for consideration by the village council. We can recommend approval of the zoning application, recommend approval with conditions that we think are in the best interest of our community, or recommend that the application not be supported. I would suggest that we listen to all the information before we put any recommendations on the floor for consideration. I'll ask now the CIO to read out the next item on the agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair, the next item on the agenda is the introduction of late items. Does the Chair have any late items?
There are no late items.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
From Brian Williams, seconded, from Andy. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Next order of business?
The next order of business is the adoption of the minutes of the Advisory Planning Commission meeting of October 16, 2019, here for adoption.
Do we have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
So moved by Ken, and seconded by Brian. Anyone, sorry, has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes? Are there any errors or omissions? No? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. The next order of business?
The next item of business, Madam Chair, is items for discussion, and under this item, we have a report of the planning consultant dated August 23, 2021, and included in your agenda materials. It is regarding a rezoning application to change the floor area ratio, lot coverage, and building height at the proposed development at 511 Lilwet Avenue.
And we are going to ask for a motion for this to go on the table. Does anyone want to make that motion? To put the report on the table?
Oh, it's unnecessary, Madam Chair. You could just turn it over to the planner to present his report.
Alright, thank you, Ken, to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The floor area ratio is a measurement of a building's or structure's floor area in relation to the size of the lot that the building or structure will be located on. Generally, the FAR floor area ratio is expressed in a decimal format and is an effective way to calculate the bulk or mass of the proposed development on a particular site. The FAR is used in conjunction with other development standards such as building heights and lot coverage. The FAR is often used to express development intensity of non-residential land uses such as commercial and industrial uses. The FAR can be used to lessen environmental impacts or to control the mass and scale of development as outlined in the diagram below, which is in your report. And the FAR considers the footprint of the building or structure and the entire occupied areas of the proposed development. Unoccupied areas such as, but not limited to, parking garages, elevator shafts, and basements are generally not included in the calculation of the FAR. With respect to lot coverage, lot coverage is also a planning tool used to control the scale and development on a lot, and the overall building footprint is controlled through the use of this tool. Excuse me. With respect to a building height, this type of planning tool controls the overall height of the building or structure. Architectural elements that do not add floor area to a building or structure, such as walls, chimney vents, roof equipment, are not considered part of the height of a building or a structure. And also... The OCP designation and zoning, and upon a review of the village's OCP, the site is within the Lake Shore Beach area designation, the waterfront commercial area, and is within the Lake Shore Special Planning Area. As per the village's zoning bylaw, the site is zoned as village commercial and is bounded by Littlewood Avenue to the south, Spruce Street to the west, and Rendell Park to the north. Although the above referenced Google picture of the site makes reference to the Bungalow Motel and Ice Cream Shop, the applicant has removed these structures under an improved demolition permit issued by the regional district. When we were looking at this application and preparing this report, the following points were considered in assessing the application. That is, the village's official community plan, and staffers of the opinion that the application is consistent with the intent of the OCP. We looked at the village's zoning bylaw, and the proposed use is consistent with the permitted land use, and then the submitted proposal for the redevelopment of the site. In a summary format, the proposal is for a proposed six-story mixed-use commercial and residential development. The specific details include that it is approximately, there will be approximately 1,044 square meters of commercial space, approximately 124 dwellings or condominiums with short-term tourist accommodation being offered. The site is 0.43 hectares or 1.06 acres in size. There will be approximately 31 biking, bicycle parking stalls will be included, and a two-story parquet is being proposed. Also associated with it, there are some public realm improvements as offered by the developer, and they're listed in the three categories of parking and street scape improvements. And there's the five points that are identified there. There's the dwelling units, dealing with the disability issues. And then there's the additional amenities that have been offered, includes a new landscaping on three sides of the public washroom located in Rendell Park with a two-year warranty program. Also, for your reference, in terms of accessibility, the project must meet the Building Code, the D.C. Building Code requirements for universally accessibility as per Building Access Handbook 2014. We've reviewed the title, and there is no flood governance registered on the title. As this is inside the Lake Shore Development Permit Area Requirements as outlined in the official community plan, this means that we have to look at the form and character of the application when we get to that stage. With respect to the proposed building height, the design guidelines recommend a maximum building height of four stories. However, up to six stories may be permitted along the village's edge closer to the base of the mountains. And with that, Madam Chair, we can turn it over to the developer to ask or for their presentation on the project, and then after that, there can be questions and answers from the APC members.
Thank you, Ken. We'll turn it over to the developer.
Okay, can everyone hear us?
Yes.
Okay, it's, my name's Alvin Bartel, and this is Leon from our office. I'm the project architect, and we're representing the developer and the ownership group at this meeting today. So thank you very much for allowing us to have a few minutes here just to speak towards this. We think the project is going to be a large contributor to the community. I had a nice meeting with the owner yesterday, and he again reiterated the fact that he's not in this for the short term to get in, create a development, and then leave. They're here for the long term, and they've committed to that. So he kind of wanted us to represent his feelings and his wishes in that vein. So he's quite interested in providing a variety of accommodations for rental and sale that allows an aging-in-place community. He's quite keen on developing further developments in the future that are specifically tailored to aging-in-place members of the community and those who may come. As far as the three things that we're talking about today, and the biggest things are the modest density, the size of the building. We're going to leave the aesthetics and all that kind of thing aside for the time being, because the issue is that there's a floor area ratio of lot coverage and the building height. So just briefly, I don't think that we're too far away from the target marks. The floor area ratio is, as I would be perfectly upfront, it's a bit of a jump there. We've gone through a number of iterations on this property for different designs, some being lower density, and it's a bit of a numbers game with developers. It's not all about maximizing their profits. It's about making sure that the pro forma works and that it's buildable. And you have to get so many units on a site to make it viable to even build it in the first place. I think we're kind of approaching that sweet spot where a pretty serious building like this, made of quality materials, is at the point where it needs to be so that, A, you have enough units that they don't all, they're not all in the millions of dollars. They're in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, which makes it affordable for the general public and not just an elite, small group that may be investing from somewhere else, but actual paying, contributing members of the public that are going to be living in this facility. So, yes, it is an increase in the density, but I think it's kind of in keeping with what we're seeing in long-term projections and range for the community where the units get a little bit smaller, people don't need as palatial of a unit, but it can be made very effective on a smaller scale with larger amenities for the residents and visitors and even the public with the interaction. There is quite a bit of commercial on the ground floor, which adds to the modest square footage that we're asking for. That's by intent, and it's hopefully going to draw a lot of tourists and people from the area to allow to partake in ice cream shops, maybe a small restaurant. We talked yesterday at the public information meeting that we had, which was very good, and we're kind of documenting what was said there. Things like kayak rentals or storage places or paddle boards, all kinds of things like that, being right next to the park and being so tied to that. The building height, I still kind of think back, you know, in feet. So the existing bylaw allows 50 feet roughly for building height. We're asking for about 75 feet, so it's a bit of a jump there. To give you perspective, walking around Rendell Park yesterday afternoon and again measuring the trees and having a look at that, those big, beautiful, mature maples which are staying, and I don't know if we can bring up a bit of a rendering here, we're going to try that. It's a brand-new one, because it kind of tells the story a little bit better for the impact of the scale of the actual building. Those trees are over 100 feet on the park side, so this gives you kind of a bit of an idea. The building is not going to overpower, especially from the water side, any kind of view planes. In fact, those trees will pretty much block out the building from that side. If you look at the Valley of Harrison Hot Springs with the hotel at the one end, the whole idea in the back, you know, I've been involved in previous discussions like this from an urban design perspective, we want to create kind of that saddle where we don't have a bunch of tall buildings in the middle stretch of Esplanade as you travel down, but the higher buildings were the existing ones, the brand-new seven-story one that's going up next to the hotel now. So we're supposed to kind of curve that saddle up towards the mountain. You all probably walked down to the hotel and seen that other building going up. It's pretty much, the structure of it is pretty much up there. That's going to be, that's probably a little bit higher, and it's the same distance away from the mountainside there as we are from this end. So this is kind of the first one at this end. And if you look from the water, from even from the, you know, the main road coming in, you want to create that bit of a saddle, so this is providing a very in-keeping kind of symmetry, and it's not anything outside of what we're seeing at the other end.
Yeah, so, and the building height that is measured is to the highest vaulted roof that we have. The main roof is actually approximately five feet lower than that. But officially, the building height is measured to the highest point, which makes that number seem a bit higher as well.
Yeah. So the massing is intended to reinforce the streetscape on the more urban side, and on this side of the rendering you're seeing there, there's a very large courtyard that's going to, you know, present a much smaller massing and view towards the park, towards the very close adjacent public areas and the water. So we looked at a number of iterations, and this seemed to be the one that worked the best from a site planning perspective. So those are kind of some of the reasons that we ended up where we are. We think, we hope, we designed a nice-looking building. It's going to be exciting, a new addition to Harrison Hot Springs, and yeah.
And like Alvin was mentioning, just the, with the, I'm sure you're all aware that the construction costs in the industry have really gone up significantly the last number of years. So just to make the, like Alvin was mentioning, make the project viable and affordable for people to purchase and live there. There was this kind of a certain number of units that needed to be, to make the numbers work, that it could be a viable project. So that's kind of the reason why just that construction costs have gone up, and it kind of needs to have a certain number of units to make the project even work.
Yes. That's kind of all we have to say. We're welcome to answer any questions or provide any other further information if we can, but that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you, Alan and Leon, for your presentation. I'm going to ask the APC members if they have any questions for you. Is it possible to change the screen so that we can actually see your faces and respond to you? Thank you. Do any members, do you want to start with Andy? Do you want to go on the table?
Yeah, thanks for your presentation. The building actually looks really, really nice. Question for you, I know you touched on this yesterday here. You said you had how many square feet of retail space total?
Let's take a look. Right now, we have, the commercial space is a mix of potentially restaurant and general commercial, although that is still subject to the final kind of tenants going in there. I'm quickly looking up the areas.
It was a number of 222.
Is 11,239 square feet, which is about 1,044 square meters of commercial space.
1,000 square meters?
Yeah, a little over 1,000, 1,044 square meters of commercial.
Okay, and the portion of that that you had labeled restaurant on your plan here, how big is that portion?
That portion is about 455 square meters. So a little under half.
Okay.
Although that is again subject to kind of whoever tenants go in, it might be a smaller space for the restaurant, but that's still.
I understand, I understand, but there has to be some sort of basis of planning. You know, that's probably going to be something like that anyways.
Yeah, for sure.
Brian, do you have any questions?
Have you figured out the ratio of the units you indicate that might be for rental and the ones that will be sold as condos?
I think the idea is that they would be, the main aspect would be like a regular market strata condo, but I think the developer at this time didn't want to limit his options. He was also, that's why the potential short-term rental would be another possibility. Not for, I believe that the developer doesn't want to manage that himself, but he didn't want to rule that out for the potential new owners or strata council.
Okay, so basically, you'd be trying to sell them as condos?
Correct.
Thank you.
You had no further questions, Brian? Ken, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. I've got a couple of questions and one comment to start with. First of all, the fit and form of the landscaped areas looks very good, and from the drawings that you do show, the profile of the building also shows well. However, it would be good for the APC members to be able to see the plans as they are developed for the building. We have a package that shows us the landscaped areas only, but not the elevation or the profiles of the buildings or the architectural layout within the buildings. That would be useful for us to be able to make a more informed decision. So I would ask that that be considered, that be provided to us. The second item, when we talk about short-term tourist accommodations being offered, I have a concern with that in regards to the landscaped areas, the roof garden on the second floor, as well as the sixth-floor garden or public space and amenity spaces. My background is in public safety and crime prevention through environmental design and threat risk assessments for large-scale development. So this is my area of expertise. And one of the things that I have found is that when you do a mix between owners, the strata title owners and short-term rental occupants of the space, and they go into an area like a landscaped exclusive garden area, like the rooftop gardens, the residents tend to be more conservative in how they use those spaces, where the short-term rental people may cut loose a little bit more and create a conflict. So there's a potential conflict zone between the condominium owners that would exist in that facility and the short-term rental occupants that might be considered. So I would strongly recommend that, first of all, we understand where the potential for short-term rentals are and what the caveats would be, or the restrictions on them intermingling with the residents within the garden spaces. And if that cannot be clearly identified, then consideration be looked at for keeping it as a condo ownership environment as opposed to a short-term rental. Because from my experience working on multiple projects is that when you get a mix between the people who have an investment in the area and people who are just visiting for vacation purpose, that there can and will be some conflicts in that area, and we should consider that before the development gets put into place. And the next comment I have is with regard to the 31 bicycle parking stalls. If we're provided with the drawings and the detail on how that type of amenity is presented within, then we may understand the security that is in place for the things like the bicycle parking. Vehicle and bicycle theft is an ongoing issue within the region, and having effective security measures that are in place to protect the assets of the residents and making sure that they're not subject to theft opportunities not only protects the assets, but it also makes it less attractive for people to try and enter into that area. And then the final comment I had with regard to the landscaping around the washroom facility in Rendell Park, and to, because washing facilities again can attract potential bad behavior, to ensure that the landscaped features that are enclosed around the washroom facility keep crime prevention through environmental design standards in mind, which basically states that, you know, the shrubs are low enough that you can't hide in amongst them, or that any tree features that are put in proximity to the building are pruned up to height sufficiently so that you can see underneath the canopy and clearly see if anybody's in the area. So those are the main things that I wanted to bring forward, and I think the starting point for that is for us to have a clear visual and technical detailed description of what is being planned there so that we can effectively scan those documents and provide any additional comment that might help council in consideration of how this is moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Do you want to respond to that, Alan and Leon?
Yes, I think we'd like to. Thank you for your comments. Those are great comments. We do have a full DP submission package that was submitted, including renderings, elevations, floor plans, sections, and so forth, that was submitted to the city, to the village, so they are there, and we're happy to share them as well. I believe that, my understanding is that the city or village staff just sent a few drawings to this committee just as it relates to the FAR and lot coverage. I believe that was the intent, but the other drawings are, we're happy to share them with the council here. In terms of the short-term rentals, we'll definitely discuss that with the developer, and I'll get their thoughts on it. Like we mentioned before, our understanding from them is that they do intend to have this as a regular strata condo building for sale with each unit. So we'll talk about possibly restricting or about the short-term rental aspect of it as well. And in terms of the, because your comment about the SEPTED perspective in terms of mixing of different uses is a valid one. Luckily, there's a lot of natural surveillance and natural access control, which will help as well. In terms of bike parking, so bike parking is all secured from inside the tenant parking area. It isn't available directly off the street, which gives an added level of security. But again, those will be indicated on the drawings it will provide to you. In terms of the landscaping of the public washroom in the park, yeah, we'll definitely either, maybe I'll let Scott, who's also in the lawn, Scott Watson, he's our landscape architect from our office, speak further, but I think that was some good comments as well. Scott, can you elaborate a bit on some of those SEPTED concerns about the landscaping?
Yeah, and as had been mentioned, you know, we will be keeping the shrubs down under 600 millimeters so that there is no hiding spots, you know, between the building and the shrub. The trees, yes, that's standard practice to have them pruned up minimum 1.8, usually around two meters, so there's, nobody can hide in amongst that area, use the trees. We have looked at also how people access the park and what their pedestrian movability is through there, which is free and open. And so there's a very good, clear line of sight into the buildings, into the park, and off and on the streets. Thanks.
And this is a quick point, as both Scott and myself are both full Level 2 SEPTED practitioners, so we understand your SEPTED comments and concerns. Thank you for them.
Thank you. Ken, did you want to ask any further questions based on their comments?
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
You okay with that?
Yep.
Before we go on further with my comments, I would like to actually ask our planner, Ken, if he had any comments regarding any of those comments, specifically the short-term rental, as well as the conceptual drawings that you might have. Madeline, so it's going to Madeline, our CIO?
Madam Chair, before I turn it over to the planner to speak to the DP process, which speaks to the drilling down deeper into the detail of the project and how that will proceed, I could make comment on the short-term rental. So the short-term rental issue is not under consideration in terms of this rezoning application. The way the short-term rental regulations work in the village of Harrison Hot Springs is that they're not allowed in residential areas. It's considered to be a commercial enterprise, and they are allowed in all commercial zones. So basically, it comes down to a decision of an individual strata as to whether or not they allow the short-term rentals, and that's how it works in our whole commercial zone.
Ken, did you want to comment on Madeline's remarks?
Yes, thank you, Madeline. Thanks for the explanation. I do understand how the zoning component works, but I would be remiss not to discuss what will become a flashpoint in development. And at this stage where the development is just going through the planning and approval process, I think it needs to be on record that that is a potential issue so that the appropriate guidance can be undertaken by the village to try and ensure that we end up with a new development where we don't get inherent problems within it.
I think if I, sorry, just, I'll get station one here again. If I can just jump in just for a second, and I think we could definitely, I completely understand that from a personal level, because exactly what was just discussed, I experienced that in quite a profound way in Kelowna with a development condos. There was a large group that had come in, and they were obviously from out of province even. This was during the whole COVID past. And it wasn't a good, it wasn't a good party happening on the large, landscaped, beautiful deck. So I completely understand that. I don't, I know we'll be talking to the owner about that, and I know that the owner will be looking for strategies and the proper mix to prevent that from happening, because I can guarantee it's the last thing that they want to happen as well. So looking forward to more discussion on that, some strategies from council or from this commission as to, you know, what the proper mix might be, how to approach that, how to maybe separate some areas or maybe restrict some areas. There've got to be, between SEPTED and a bunch of other, you know, good ideas from all these people that are in the meeting, we've got to come up with some kind of a proper balance here.
Thank you. Ken, I'm going to throw to the planner, but can we ensure that Ken Gisborne's comments are reflected in the minutes?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you for that. And now I'm going to pass it along to Ken, our planner.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Just for the, for information of everybody, what we're looking at is a process of collecting information at this particular point in time, and then we take all of that information, and then we... And then we take all of that information and then we analyze it and put it back in front of the council for a future decision at some point down the road. It's generally, it'll be after the, the public hearing requirement. But speaking to the development permit process, that is a technical exercise that is between the planner, myself and the developer. We can get into the details. We don't share with the APC because we're not looking for the APC's approval. Because the way the legislation operates, because it's in, inside an approved official community plan, the way it works now is that detailed information is shared with, with the village, which has been done already. And then we turn it into a development permit to address the forming character. And that sort of information goes back to council for their approval. You do not share a development permit with the APCs or with the public because it's seen as it's already approved in the official community plan. So there, there's no need to go back and rehash that, that type of information again.
Thank you. So I have, I have a couple of comments myself. Sorry, Andy, did you want to say something? Go ahead.
Thanks. Just maybe semantics here. We're, we're talking about rezoning.
Correct.
But we're actually not rezoning the property. We're amending.
We're doing, we're talking about a variant. We're talking about variances, not rezoning, but variances to that.
Madam Chair, it, it's a rezoning, but it's a tax amendment only.
Right.
So it's not actually zoning from changing from commercial to, you know, whatever.
No, what we, what they'll be doing is just adding text into the commercial classification to address these concerns. The FAR, the building height and the lot coverage.
I think that, that point is important to have reflected in minutes as well. So we're not actually rezoning the whole thing, just those, those changes.
That's in our package. Actually, that's the very first issue under the issue.
Okay.
It states it very clearly right there, what purpose of this is. So it does state that in the package.
Okay, thanks.
Did you have any other questions, Andy, before I continue?
Uh, no.
You're good. Okay. So I had a couple of questions for you guys then. So I just wanted to confer, sorry, to clarify that there are two floors of parking. In the site plan drawings that were provided to us, there was only one floor of parking. Could you just explain to us or just lay out to us from the, from the ground up or from below ground up, how this, how each floor?
You can share.
Middle of each floor and which two floors are paid for underground parking?
Sure. And I'll let you verbally describe it first, then maybe share some drawings if that's acceptable to Ken, based on his last comments. Verbally, the going from the ground floor up, the, the first level of parcade at kind of basically the ground level, maybe slightly into the ground just due to water table issues is parking as well as commercial uses on the west and north sides. So the side facing the, the park and the lake and the side facing Screw Street and around the corner a bit on Littlewood Avenue. So probably three quarters of that P one parquet level is parking with the other portion as, as commercial space. You go up the next level, that's to the P two level. It is again, the parking portion is about the same as the floor below. So about three quarters of the space is, is parking. And the, the spaces that were.
So that's fully above ground, correct? Not underground as in stated.
Correct.
Yeah. So if you, if you just like parking levels are roughly ten foot floor to floor. And if you, if you look at that twenty foot height, we kind of depress that into the ground. You know, three, four feet, yeah, whatever we can, just to kind of hide that. The commercial, the commercial hides both of those levels completely because you need a higher ceiling height there around the fourteen, fifteen, sixteen foot mark. Because you've got a lot of things going on there. So basically it's this skin of commercial that wraps around and completely hides two levels of parking in behind it.
So, so, so commercial then is street level. There's not a step up to.
That's correct. Commercial is at street level. So it's right off the sidewalk. You'll walk right into the shops all the way around. So here's a little bit of a section that describes it much more clearly than, basically there is a picture of what I just said. Yeah.
Okay.
This line here that where you can see my mouse, that's where the grade is level and this first level of parking is like Alvin said, about four or five feet down with the commercial being at grade level with, with the higher ceiling.
And then there's a big, there's a big concrete lid there that the units themselves are, are built on top of.
All right. Because I do notice in your, in your marks on the site plan here, you've got a hundred and twenty four units. The requirements are one point two five spots per unit for a total of a hundred and fifty five unit or spaces, but you're providing a hundred and thirty six. You're actually not providing any X, any spots at all for your commercial. Also, the accessible stalls are to be a minimum of ten required and you're required, so you're providing four spots on that. And only one EV is provided as well. So when I look at this, you're looking at a lot coverage variance, which is asking for an increase of seventy five to eighty three point eight, I believe. Which is an additional eleven point seven percent of the ground space. So I know parking is a separate issue, which requires a separate variance. But in my opinion, the lot coverage is linked to parking as this is space that could potentially be used for parking. So what do you, so I have a real issue with the parking provided yet because it doesn't meet the requirements. And I know that that's a massive concern in the location that it's currently in or presently, you know, being developed because of the boat launch. Because of the boat launch, because of the pay parking, because of the lock of parking that we have in this village. So to me, we cannot really talk about the lot coverage without linking it to the parking.
It should also point out that we have the parking that's provided. We have ten of those stalls are tandem stalls. I mean, that means that case for those who don't know, they're double, double length.
Okay. So someone with a boat trailer might take that or someone with a U-Haul or something might take that. It's not feasible to consider that open parking because you're going to get blocked in.
Exactly, exactly. And, and those do not count as two stalls in our numbers. But ten of them are, are tandem kind of in, in effect, two stalls, but they're not counted as such.
Right. So that doesn't really solve the issue of parking.
Yeah. I wonder if Eileen, I see her on the screen here. She's the developer's representative. I wonder, and she had some new, maybe newer information on that parking question because you're absolutely right. That's going to be a point of, that's going to be a hot topic for the entire community. So maybe I'll, I'll ask Eileen to chime in there and maybe provide a little bit further information of some late breaking news.
Sure. This is, this is Eileen. I'm the development manager kind of representing the ownership. And yeah, I heard your concern about the parking and in terms of, let's talk about the commercial parking.
Okay, let's.
Right here. Let me start my video. Okay. So in terms of the parking for commercial, we do have the offsite parking agreement with the lot nearby this, you know, this, this development site. And that's that offsite parking development, you know, we done the calculation can accommodate thirty four parking, you know, commercial parking stalls. So we recognize, you know, it's a very sensitive area, you know, parking is, it has been a problem, you know, it's continued probably be a problem. And that's why we provide, you know, a, a separate proposal to, you know, the, the planning consultant. Basically, we can offer a offsite parking for the commercial and that's thirty four stores right there.
Okay. So that, that would be sufficient for that. But let's actually talk about the requirements of the owners.
For the residential?
Yes. How do you address that?
Okay. So, and, and Leon, feel free to chime in. So right now we have a hundred thirty something parking stalls.
Hundred thirty six.
Hundred thirty six. And we also have tandem parking. And that, that doesn't really count towards.
No, it does not.
It doesn't come down. So I think we have about nine tandem stores for that one. And that's, you know, we, basically that was based on a hundred twenty four units. And based on, you know, most of you getting one parking stall. And of course, you know, we have a few three bedroom units. They will want two stores. So that was based on that kind of scenario. And you, you know, because the.
Plus more than we need for a commercial.
Yeah. Because, you know, the, uh, uh, the reason we, we think that's sufficient because, you know, we, we can see a portion of the people using this building or using this, all the units. It's going to be, you know, the, you know, the people actually come here for the vacation and, you know.
So if they come here for vacation, how do you think that's sufficient? I don't understand that. Sorry. There's no link to me there. Because here's the part, you know, here's the reality is that a lot of families have two, four people in their family. This is, and nowadays, most families are not one car families. Most times there's two, if not, you know, your older children that also have a vehicle as well. It's not addressing that. So that's a huge concern that not only I share, but I believe that every member at this table shares as well as the residents of the village. So that's a concern. I'm just letting you know that that's a concern. I think that you need to think about that, give that some thought possibly in how you're going to, you know, accommodate the, the required spaces, which are, in my opinion, minimal versus what you guys are proposing. So we don't need to hash that out exactly how you're going to do that now. I think that you guys need to have that discussion on your own time. So that is one of my, I'm just giving you a list of my concerns. So we'll continue on then.
Yeah, I heard your concern. So likewise, say, you know, we can, we can go back and do some more transportation, you know, demand studies with the consultants and then we can decide what's the appropriate ratio for this building.
So I think that's a good idea. Because I think it's also really, I think it's important to understand too, that we're rural. We don't have the luxury, you know, of bus lines, of train lines. We need vehicles in this town. So that needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
So I'm just gonna, sorry?
And, and, and I just want to add one more to your comments. You know, I know you mentioned there's only one EV store, you know, in our, in our proposal and that number is going to be changed. Because, you know, right now we all understand, you know, because the train people actually, you know, start buying all the electrical vehicles.
Absolutely.
Demand for that is way higher. We recognize that it's, it's necessary for, you know, for developer to take that into consideration. We, we even actually talk about, haven't really done all the detail yet, but we even talk about we're probably going to provide a hundred percent EV stores.
Well, that's good to hear.
That's, that's in the discussion.
Good. Okay. Andy, you wanted to, to mention something? Would that Andy, our APC member speak first, then we'll go back to you and then we'll go continue on with my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Two questions. First of all, how does it get broken up in the parking area for resident versus visitor parking? Is what you're proposing, the hundred thirty six stalls, all resident parking and no visitor? Or is there some kind of breakup there?
Alan and Leon, did you want to answer that?
Yes, the, the visitor and, and tenant parking are, are all at this point in one, in one space.
Okay. So that, that would, that could potentially get broken up later on, reducing further the number of actual resident spots. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that's to be decided. I think the, this, the bylaw is one point two five stalls per, per unit right now. It doesn't, I don't believe it breaks down between visitor and tenant at this point.
Okay, okay. Thanks. That's the first question. Second question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, the one point two five rate includes the resident plus the visitor's.
It does. Okay, okay.
Yes.
Thank you for clarification.
The, the other question I had was, you mentioned the agreement for the commercial parking. And I just wanted to have a bit more information about that agreement.
Do you mean the offsite that they're referring to?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Offsite one. Is that some, a piece of land that is going to be purchased by the developer? Or is this an, a rental agreement? Is it a temporary thing when the owner of that wants to redevelop? Does that go away? What, some more details on that?
Yeah, right now we actually have the, for, for this developer, he already have a few lots in his hand. And this particular offset agreements, we actually looking at the law at five, three, one Littlewood, which, you know, that's he, he actually owns the land. So we, we kind of, you know, calculate based on the lot size, we can provide thirty four stores. That being said, you know, he's in the process of acquiring couple other lots nearby. So at the end of the day, we may be, you know, kind of shifting to a different lot, similar size, providing similar, you know, the, the number of stores, but not necessarily to be that particular address. So, so we're finalizing couple proposal, but the bottom line is the offset agreement, whatever the law we're going to provide is the law we act, the developer actually owns.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So I'm going to continue on. I'd like to speak to your public realm improvements. And for APC members, it's on page eight of our agenda package. So you have under public realm improvements, a number of items. But before we begin with that, I would like to clarify what you mean by public realm. Is that the owners of the building or the residents of Harrison? Is this where we talk about, you know, public benches and bike racks, the sidewalks and so forth? That's just to give you an indication of what I'm referring to.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Yeah, the, obviously the public streets and sidewalks and benches that are on public, public land, those will be provided by the developer at, at their cost, but it'll be on, on city property.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So that clarifies that then. So that is basically Harrison residence. Is that correct? Just to.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. So you know, I know that there is a number of parking and streetscape improvements such as public benches and bike racks. You have listed as number one. So the public benches and bike racks, that is required as part of the development permit. So it's not actually an improvement offered by you guys. The new public sidewalks, new curbs and new storm drainage, those are all addressed as part of the servicing agreement. New public trees that will be installed and maintained, well, that's part of the landscaping agreement. So all of those above are not public realm improvements. They're simply all part of specific required agreements. So you also note public benches, public barbecue stands and a public children's play area up to ten thousand dollars. So where will that be built? Is there a location at this point for that? And as well, is that for the owner's public use? Or is it for the residents of Harrison's public use?
That's the residents of Harrison's public use and that is in addition to any requirements from the city. Those are additional items on top and the location of those are to be coordinated between the, the village staff and the developer. We are kind of open to whatever location the, the village seems as the best and most suitable location. And just to be clarified, that is additional, additional as to on top of what's already required. There's, there aren't the public benches and say bike racks that will be required, though these are all on top of those requirements.
Right. But also, as I just mentioned, they're also part of the development permit, right? They're all part of the different various servicing agreements. So what you're talking about is actually the community amenity contribution for the, the public benches, the barbecue stands and so forth, which is actually put into a reserve. So the next item was the public art contribution and you're saying up to ten thousand dollars. Well, that speaks to, you know, policy one point two six, the community amenity contributions policy. I do appreciate, you know, that it's a volunteer gesture, but typically the village receives amounts of, you know, twenty five to a hundred thousand dollars. So I actually find your entire public realm improvement lacking. And a number of these are not actually, shouldn't actually be in there because they are, as I mentioned earlier, part of various servicing agreements. So I just wanted to put that out there. I want that reflected in the minutes as well because I do want that going back to council so that they can make further recommendations based on this.
Well, I just want to point out the additional ten thousand dollar, you know, for the, for example, for the public art, additional ten thousand dollars for the children's play area, the intention.
That was the public, oh, okay, sorry, the public benches and the public.
It's, no, it's the intention for the developer is on top of whatever's required by the village associated with this development. They want to kind of voluntary contribute additional.
I understand that. And what I'm saying is, I mean, that sounds nice, but it's actually part of policy one point two six, the community many contributions. So it's actually separate from what's required as to the, the volunteer gesture for that policy. So there's, they're two separate things. And I think that you guys just sort of need to go back and have a look at how you're laying that out and how you're proposing it. Can I look at our, our planner? Ken, did you have any comments or Madal or Cao at this point? Nothing further to add? Do any APC? Do any APC members have any further questions for Scott, Leon, Alan or Aileen? Nothing further to add, thank you for your presentation, thank you for your time, we appreciate that, we are just going to talk amongst ourselves here for a moment. Thank you.
Yeah.
We get ready to move.
Okay. So you guys, you have no further questions, comments that you'd like to make? So from what I'm hearing then, from. One second. So from what I'm hearing, based on your comments. You have no issues with the FAR, the, the floor area ratio, the lot coverage, the building height. There's no main concerns about that, we did note your concerns regarding the short term vacation rental, which I think is a very valid one. And my points are also noted, so I think that it's important that council hear those. So then, okay, based on your comments, I'd like to put a recommendation on the floor. I would, point one, I'm going to break this down into two points. Point one is, based on your comments, the APC recommend approval of the proposal. Subject to the development meeting all parking requirements on site. And point two, the APC recommend the developer resubmit the public realm improvements. Specifically, specifically addressing policy 1.26, the community amenity contributions. So is there anyone that would like to make that motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If those could be considered as two separate recommendations and perhaps someone wants to.
Okay.
Move the first recommendation.
We'll go with point one, which was the, the, the recommending approval based on all parking requirements on site, does someone want to make that motion?
Can I just make one more comment?
Sure.
Maybe include in that, something about traffic flow in and around the boat launch ramp and, and including that, can that be included there somehow? Because I think that's a big issue and on busy weekends.
Okay, do you want to speak to that, Madeline?
Yes, Madam Chair, you may wish to add to your first recommendation that. The APC recommend approval subject to all parking requirements being met on site and subject to the receipt of a traffic study. Is that appropriate, a traffic flow study?
Traffic flow study, are you satisfied with that, Andy? Do you want to make that motion?
Sure.
Okay, so the motion is by Andy and it is seconded by Brian. Point two, does someone want to make the motion to recommend the developer resubmit the public realm improvements specifically addressing policy 1.26? The community amenity contributions. Ken, you're making that motion? And will someone second that, is someone seconding that? Andy is seconding that.
Madam Chair, do you want to go back and call the question on?
I'm going to go back, I'm going to go back and call the question, everyone, all in favor? And no one opposed, thank you for that. I'm going to go back to the Cao, don't, we're going to go back to point two, right, and is everyone in favor on point two? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mad, I'm going to turn it to you, and could you please read the motions back to us?
I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to refer to your notes probably, but as, as I understand it, the first recommendation, which is going forward to council. Is that the APC recommends approval of the proposed rezoning, subject to all parking requirements being met on site. And subject to the receipt of a traffic flow study with the respect to the boat harbor area.
Oh, yeah, we're good with that?
Boat launch, boat launch, thank you, and.
Well, can I just interrupt for one second? We don't want to speak specifically to the boat launch, we want the surrounding area as well, correct?
We'll just leave it as a traffic flow study.
Including the boat launch and the large vehicles that are.
Absolutely, the entire area.
And also the, the, they were talking about access to Randall Park.
Yeah.
And I know from launching boats at that boat launch ramp, having people cross the road behind you when you're backing up is not good.
No, we want the entire area.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Including the boat launch area.
Yes.
Yes, yes, I have that noted. And the second recommendation, Madam Chair, you may want to correct me, is that. The, the proposal be referred, that the developer be referred to community amenity contribution policy number 1.26. For reconsideration of the public realm contributions, proposed public realm contributions.
Correct, okay, that sound good to everybody? All right. Ken, planner Ken, sorry. I'm sorry, I can't.
Just a further to. The APC members concerned about the Septed, that will be addressed through the development permit process. So we can look at all of those issues, there's various other tools that we have to implement down the road if it gets that far. So we will be addressing it because it's on the record as a concern here for the APC.
Ken.
Thank you for that, I guess my, my concern comes from a previous comment you made, is that the development permit process. We don't get involved in that from the, from this committee, so when we make observations about the, those types of things. Basically, this is our only forum to do that.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any further comments, questions? Then I will turn it over to the next order of business.
The next order of business is adjournment.
And we're looking for a motion on that one, and Brian.
So.
And our seconder is Ken. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. We adjourn the meeting at 10:55, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.